Any public discussion on any item on this agenda?
They're gonna have somebody write this.
And sitting right there in front of you.
I said, man, I just got to Nancy, I might get some cleaning. I looked up the order. She can just tell them all that.
Almost is your favorite season, huh?
That cedar, if that cedar don't get down then what it's doing, when's the canola start?
She's playing April, isn't she? You know the April?
Just get out of cedar and go into the canola.
Seen videos where they like hit the trees or whatever in Poland.
Well, Katie made me get the Harley out yesterday, didn't take it for.
Made you, huh?
We rode through Cedar Hills. And I think that Harley was shaking in Cedar Creek.
Sure she's just not trying to kill you? It's like, hey, let's go where he's allergic to.
Got a death wish or what?
Is she driving or are you driving?
I was driving. They have control from the back seat because they can punch you in the ribs. She's like a cruise controller, man, she get over about sixty five, you start getting, oh!
Just don't ever give her a taser.
No.
So that's from behind while you're driving.
I was, I was.
My, my late overall.
I was dismelled.
I moved with Captain. All in favor?
Which second did you take?
In the orange for each thing.
I don't think you'd get a high score on your dismount either.
Probably not. I've dismelled before. Wasn't fun deal.
It was not a ten.
When I got done sliding down the blacktop, the car behind me got around me. Evidently they're not made to ride stand up on the seat.
You get arrested for that.
I used to do it all the time, I'd stand up on the seat. If you don't do it after you've been drinking. That doesn't work well.
And you're not as young as you once were?
Evil, can eagle would've been proud.
Or ashamed of one of the two.
The guy beside me thought he was right.
What else is on your chest today, David?
What?
Give me the little ones up on your chest.
Yeah, thank goodness, finally.
David was, I've been sick.
Take a shot of Wonders when she come in. David's been sick.
We called Trent on Saturday before we left, we were gonna see if they'd be, and they wanted to go, and I'm like, get them. And he's like, I'm still running the fever, and David ran the fever, and you could hear Kevin in the background going, "I'm not sick, I'll go."
I'm not sick. Like, so we're ready to go.
Said she was like, she wanted to see my other two nieces. Like, they're not gonna be there, I'll still go.
Jessica, we're having an arguing match, that's kind of two peas in a pod there.
It's only gonna get worse than the way they did. I was like, I can't, I don't really wanna take her in her yet. Sick up there. Question with Grandma, going right out of the hospital, my.
Or Ken's gonna take someone up there and shoot him.
Right, that's what I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I can't imagine getting sick and trying to throw up, and I've just had a pacemaker put in, that can't be good for you. She was still pretty sore. My grandpa's in the nursing home, and we saw him, and just that wouldn't have been a good place for her to pass the bug either. He died out of a fight with his roommate, and they finally moved his roommate. Two old men and a nursing home can't be a good combination.
They got him. There you go, is this it?
That was canceled, that was the beginning of the, sorry.
If you like it, do you sign it?
No, 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 that's canceled.
Tell it to cancel.
Yeah, I forgot to pull that up.
I missed it.
No, no, there's a, there should be another one in there somewhere. No, you just had one canceled.
Yeah, the one wasn't signed down there on the, no, I haven't signed, we told him to sign it.
Hey, tomorrow at ten thirty, my first come.
Thank you, I have an alarm set, so. Did you guys hear the Senator Langford?
Coming to, you're gonna be at the background, ten thirty tomorrow.
What's that?
Senator Langford.
At ten thirty.
Which one, just a visit? Be here about an hour now. I don't know where his next step is after here, I don't think he's going to.
I'm sure that good looking youtuber's out there will remind me.
Yes, she wants you to be there.
Yeah, she may not want you around. She don't wanna get embarrassed.
She may not wanna be seen with you in public.
Like that, I don't know who he is. She does say the name like.
I took her down to Mexico one time, and she could speak Spanish, and I kept seeing every time she'd get around to, gosh, they'd be looking at me and smiling, and I finally got there close enough, I could hear she was telling that I was, I don't know, she's telling something in Spanish that was making them laugh. It was something about me, I know. I think she was telling other things.
She just trying, or she was trying to sell you to them down there?
They just laughed.
That thought crossed my mind.
They just laughed when they, when she named the price?
Every time she talked to them, they'd look at me and laugh, and I go, what's happening going on here?
Don't ever hurt here if you got to get a job.
I haven't heard of him.
I talked to Trent last week, or before, he didn't hurt me bad.
Probably the last of them. I want so badly to go down and watch Brayden Saturday and Jessica. They were gonna start cleaning to stain their floors, and I was supposed to get there back and call, and she called Friday night, and she said, "Okay, now you're gonna be available Saturday in like a week." And then they didn't call, so I could've went, but. We worked out like yesterday after church, and we're gonna leave the mom's, we all get it there, and. I think we finally left about nine o'clock, about nine.
He'll be ready for them to move in, be settled.
And the other one, she's working on moving a modular home in down there by the church, so it's not gonna get them for a while.
But modular home, they don't do the prep work.
Well.
They do, I mean, they take out, they do all the prep work.
Fifty-one pay for it, and she keeps saying, well, no, save us money if we, and I'm like, that's not even a topic.
There's that we word, there's that we word again.
Exactly. Landon was happy, he got the very, very tip of the.
There's eighteen.
It's good for them, so.
Didn't even call me.
Dark night, Jay, just keep giving. Marv and I get a little behind here, we'll all just keep that. You need a little rest. Holy smokes! Oh, this is Jack's good.
Would Max have a comment, or would the auditors be in there, Jay, or? Did Max say anything about the auditors being there?
I tried to call him, he didn't call me back, and I didn't call him back, so.
Thanks for postponing ours.
You know, you only think.
That's exactly right.
Oh, we don't have anything to be scared about, no, all right?
Ain't massage words, right? Dead right, older?
Yeah.
Pass out the fine colors.
If you don't pass out the fine colors, you'll just get to be wearing colors.
Yeah, just wear the color, not the. I just figured out what was wrong with me this morning, Carl. No thank you.
The first one, the top one, and then the rest of them are, kind of general EMS, but the top ones, sheriff, don't sign up.
Do what, man?
I think she's just making a line for the first one, and then he's gotta sign all the rest of them.
I'll say, bring the big chair.
You better be a man, David.
I don't think so. I'm gonna just change you to that chair.
I changed his mouth shut that day, so you and Marvin are gonna make the decision.
Don't listen to your baby, because I'm chairman, you call the other two, and he done divorced.
Just wait for them, you know, I don't mean that he's gonna be gone.
Yeah, we can do it early, effective, from July.
Can you do it for the next, what?
Three years.
Three years.
And then they called me, and I said, oh, you gotta talk to chairman.
Yeah.
If someone blames everything on, like, if you didn't like that, you better call the chairman.
He's got the baby shoulder.
Hey, you got a call here, won't that go? Do you know who the chairman, the mayor's daughter is? No, no.
I got my major point back in.
No, not really.
You got Stan Tucker.
Who am I?
They did it on purpose, I know. Yeah, that's one of the ideas.
It's a good thing you get paid that extra money to be chairman, right?
Oh, boy, yeah. Hey, I failed to get that last few months.
The check's in the mail. Oh, did you forget to sign those? We was giving you a break that day, you said you just started signing.
Make it out, I'll sign it, there's no problem there. So we oughta get the old end.
I think there's a lot that you can't sign your own checks.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to find a chairman to sign it.
The other chairman has to sign it.
This guy's the most important people.
That's why.
Well, that gives another control bird.
It's like, that's why being the vice, president and vice chair is the best job in the world, because all you really do is you fill in when they're gone, and you blame everything on them.
Man, anybody who pleases speak more than willing to put a burden on them.
I don't know, like, three texts, and I'm just asleep down the road.
Where's our trash can? We need one.
Hey, you sign a person, then I'll put it in the trash can.
I'll make a motion.
You see that off work, y'all?
Officer.
Now, that one might be interesting. Like, what's happening with control bird, we better stay on top of that one. Big trouble is that we.
Him and, him and no Roach.
Goken?
No, Mikey Roach and Chad, every time they like one way.
Weren't they the ones that had the rabbit run through and?
Yeah, rabbit run through one.
Yeah, likely to have that ever happening.
Had it clear out?
We've had it happen about half a dozen times in the last few years. That one rabbit, I wish to heck we could've carried a gun. If we'd have shot him out there, he would've saved about three miles of fire he gave.
Wow, it's really good when they get on fire.
You boy.
You mean the firefighter won't let you carry guns, I'm gonna.
They have two that were in the, when was the rabbit, when was something like?
One was stunk, we had down the west corner one time. We did slow him down, though. We got close to the fire truck, kept shooting water on him, rolling him over and over and over. But it was sure rank when we got there, and man, he was mad.
I think I would've been the one on the inside of the truck, instead of along the back of the truck, that one.
I moved with Captain Luttrell and Paul to report, also, all in favor? I drove car in front of me, it threw fire.
Look, that one look like two on there.
Hey! We wanna accept this one or not?
I don't know, I'm not gonna make any moves anymore.
Damn, Marvin's making all the money, ain't he?
Ooh, is that one like regular?
Oh, that's a big one.
Four grand, yeah. You wanna share that with us, Marvin?
Oh, he's got his bad last three, and he hasn't got any.
Armor energy, I don't know if I've heard of him. Don't make any difference, money's money, so.
That's that one you verbally, you waited on.
Oh, last week, yeah, okay. I moved with Captain.
Is there ever crossing money going to a house certain fund?
All in favor?
Going to go in a certain fund to be used for certain.
A fund that just.
ABC Services, Incorporated Service Agreement for units and sheriff's office. They're working on that deal too.
There's two here, one for us, and then the other, go back to this.
That's the only unit we've got in the courthouse that's got a horizontal compressor in it, and it, they're gonna put a vertical like all the other units. Why we had one with horizontal? I'll tell you why, it's called Lucky Bill. But that one, there's tremendous problems in it, so they're gonna put a vertical one in it to try to salvage that much of it rather than to put our new almost four thousand dollar unity in. Gets accepted by over here.
Yeah, and then on the back page was just a copy for us to keep.
I moved with Captain, also, all in favor?
And they're, you're just gonna do the option one to replace the compressor, right?
Yeah. Power and plan maintenance agreement, that's for our generator down there, and they're gonna fire that one to run for sure to see that we'll pull the whole courthouse for a period of time rather than just fire it up and then shut down, they're gonna load it and make sure that it'll pull, it'll pull, it'll pull all the courthouse, which there's plenty of generators there to do it, but we've never done it, so.
Is it gonna be hard to switch that over?
No, it like, it's gonna be.
I should sit him in.
Give me a key, her.
Just know what it's like.
I moved with Captain.
And you want to do the, the F option here, the load bank test?
Yeah, they're gonna, it's a, it's a yearly maintenance deal, but they're gonna fire that one running.
But we're not gonna, we're not gonna do any of the other, the other, those others?
No.
Two second, I don't.
No, they're gonna do that, you know?
Not, I didn't read it there, but here's something, he didn't tell me any specific date. Fuel beds to be obtained by Derek can wait for quote sheet, and the quote should be obtained.
Sure, I think I emailed them to the girls already, but there's you guys, the quote sheet, those need to be turned in, when you turn in your requisition form, so then we can attach it to the PO, when we put the PO on. I give that to your company too.
I moved with Captain, forms and fuel collection.
For sale. I'll say.
Sheriff service meeting.
This is another thing that came out, if you have a person that, and they have to be incarcerated for a certain amount of time, but if they receive social security or some kind of a form of SSI payment of any kind, it will actually be halted, and this allows us to go ahead and accept them, to keep them, of course, that way they can pay their fees and everything that they need to be paid, but we have to put that into a certain account. The auditors and OSU were recommended that we put it through in the resolution form, so this is the resolution form standing, that we're not gonna put it in that cash VR, which is the kind of the reported prisoner account, we're gonna put it into the cash B and keep track of it that way.
Yeah, that's, well, I thought we based it on same thing last.
I'll make a motion.
Say. All in favor? Declarating sheriff's request for district one for a transfer tank and.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Do all the resolutions for district one.
Back to Jim and asking. Sign this up.
Oh, yeah. That's how we draw, so we do a performance, I do a demo, sign these up here, take them.
Oh, on what's that?
On that.
Not on the resolution, no, just on the disposal.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're setting up. Yeah. I'm moving with Captain, resolutions for this, I would say, all in favor?
That's for all of them.
Read the quote, all in favor, to move nine normal equipment and hardware and you said it'd be next week. Do we wanna table them or do we wanna?
I just take no action.
No action. Read the inspection invoice for district two, two, and three.
Did you get your register special?
Just, just sends that one, all three of you send next year. Actually, three spots, they might change it to three spot. That's your reported conference.
All three of us signed, they.
Yes, that's your reported conference.
Motion. I'm moving with Captain, we give him in one.
In second.
All in favor? Conference.
We need a motion over that.
That I need, all in favor? Any unfinished business, I'm moving with Karen.
I'll say.
All in favor?